They apply for the permit?
Well, the driving permit, no, then we need to, of course, which is an exception. And we have representatives here if you have any questions. As I say, who you guys want is Ed.
Um, not necessarily. I mean, as was pointed out, we, we did get our safety permit this week. Um, so that addressed several of the concerns about storm water. And, um, yeah, basically, you know, we've been here before. We got our conditional use approval earlier this year. So, you know, it took more time than we had hoped getting through planning permission because we, we changed our racking system and, and had to kind of redesign some things. But, um, I think we're in a good place and I think we're, we're waiting for it unless there's any questions or comments.
Uh, what was the construction need?
Um, we are hoping to delay, uh, twenty twenty-six, so nine months-ish, couple.
Anyone else have questions?
I'll make a motion that you bring with the lead development. I'll sign it.
On paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you. Um, the fire company? Truck submission, um, had, uh, Tozer's landing issue, which is, um, straight in our paths.
And, um, we just have a place that all, uh, we're going to be doing everything about, um, tree care. They've been, they've been, and the cameras, the trail cams that were not on kayak track were also.
Trail cams that we put?
No.
Oh.
They, they were, they were put there. I don't know if they've been picked up. They're not like that, because they are, but they are not there.
Okay, so at this point, we have an ordinance. Do we want to, um, read, read through this and next week come up with an idea? Yeah. Next, we have spectrum, the fiber optic line installation, converting the dates in December.
They just, uh, they, she fixed those dates that were on the last, um, email for the permit. And it did, they changed them from December first through the thirty-first. So that's from that, um.
From December one?
Yep.
Through thirty-one?
Sometime for the, right now. It'll be installed.
Before the, uh?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, next, we have Athens Township, other work super. Um, we have the Penda evaluation of the SUCO and FDR project.
I did not, I had already posted the agenda, but, um, Marty from SUCO said, there's an email I sent him too, that he said, um, some of the spots that are degrading looked at, and he will have a report back to us. What did he say?
He said something in the first thing in January. Yeah, he said.
But they wanted to get us their numbers for, um, for budgeting for each one's decision for what program, which, whatnot. Planning, and also contacted, I mean, the, we gave a look at everybody for what planning was going to happen for utility companies in the next, I'm sure there's two.
Oh, good.
They didn't ask Zach Williams of Aqua, that he don't have anything in the near future, anywhere in township. Unless something blows up.
Yeah.
That's what he said, if, if Maine pops, he said, that might expedite it. But he said, with the exception of Valley Place and Roche, all the other roads in that, he said, are fairly new. And he said, they have nothing slated for those two roads in the foreseeable future. Because I asked, I said, we left Valley off, I said, because you said, we might have something in the future. And I said, that road wasn't all that horrible, so, spoke to him as of today, they have nothing coming up, so.
So, did you find anything else out?
I spoke to him, it was the same thing as, uh, as Mr. Freeland came up with. Um, so there's nothing for them. Uh, I did, I mean, similar with, uh, with ATA. Um, that's working out pretty well. And then I spoke to the construction manager for, it's not Valley City Gas, Valley Gas.
Yeah, Energy, yeah.
Uh, Valley Energy. Um, the only thing they have coming up is Blue Swan, or Blue Spruce, uh, mobile park. Um, but this Jimmy that I spoke to, I said, I'll stop by probably tomorrow or the next day and kind of show them what we're looking at, or at least what I was told we're looking at. That way I can make sure they at least have everything ready and done before we even think about moving forward.
Okay, great.
So.
I got him all.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, she's been, been a gauza.
Okay, good. Uh, okay, the dump, that dump truck condition, uh, fleet replacement schedule?
That, uh, I don't have anything like printed that. And I apologize because I probably had eighty-five things happening at that point, but I don't remember who told me, please mention that. Just about the dump truck capabilities and maybe needing to start planning a replacement schedule rather than waiting for just waiting till some happens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe that's something that you guys can work on this week?
Yeah, yes, maybe. Zach and I are going to, we've already talked about it, trying to get some kind of, um, system in place just so we can run services and make sure we know. Because they went out earlier and took care of the, uh, the roads. And when they came back, I think it was number, and again, I'm sorry, but number four, I think it was the cam went on the back wheel, back wheel locked on the, on the one. And then number seven, the chain box gasket blew. So now we're kind of down two dumps, but, uh, we think, uh, we think number seven will be an easy fix. We just, who knows, the other one, I don't know.
I did not hear back about, um, I don't know if anyone else did, if the new Western Star was taken to very early yet, yeah. They did say it was going to be this week, so I just didn't hear back and kind of.
Last I knew, when I talked to Terry Sheets, they were looking at approximately eight, nine months before it got finished. And that's simply because they're waiting for the box and the equipment to show up for the outfit. So according to Terry, we're already on the schedule, even though the Western Star hasn't showed up yet. We're on the schedule in, in a queue of order of doing. The only way they'll move us up is if a truck ahead of us, something isn't ready when they go to do it. They'll move them back, move arms up. He sympathizes that, you know, we lost a truck on fire, but the order is the order. Unless something else drastic happens with a truck in front of us, then they can move us up.
Okay. So maybe next week we can get a, a, a list. Um, the MOU and Zach, we do have an update here.
Was approved last month. And that was all we were waiting, yeah, that was all of it.
So we just need to make a motion to approve it.
I mean, this is good for all of twenty-six? Is that what we give this code?
Running permit.
January twenty, twenty-sixth to thirty, December thirty-first to twenty, twenty-seven.
Yeah, at the very bottom.
It would remain unchanged.
Okay, good, all right.
No time.
Just that his, his rate would, would go the fall of twenty-five, and then January one, it would, it would stay the same.
Right.
He'll be getting twenty-six's rate in twenty-five because that, we actually created that position from the twenty-six contract for the current contract. I'll sign it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And next, we have the MOU. Um, for Mr. Lundy. Um, yeah, I think we do. We, we have that, so that'll be what, when we come out, we'll be able to do that. I'm just going to start so that I don't forget it. I'll quit. Okay. Um, I'm going to keep it. Um, next, we have a purchase order from the Athens Township Police Department. Um, this is for their ammunition, which we had talked to Roger about, I think, two meetings ago. Um, this is the total charge for the twelve total cases. And that was, uh, forty-seven, forty-seven, ninety-eight.
Is that why nine?
Four-ten, two-thirty-nine. All right, so we just need a motion.
I'll make a motion for it.
I'll sign it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, next, we have the minutes from the supervisor meeting on the nineteenth. Um, that was the special day.
No, it was the regular reading.
Special meetings, yes.
Then you special.
Yes. I did see talking those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting eleven eighteen minutes.
I'll sign it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That, I've seen.
You can have that in attendance.
Uh, next, we have the supervisor's special meeting on the first. And that was for the, um, Baker Tilly update in personnel. And I don't see any issues with those minutes anyway.
I'll make a motion to set the special meeting to up one.
All.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next, consider and discuss the Baker Tilly audit submission.
We got this update today. The, um, attached final, uh, financial statements and DCD report. And the instructions for how to have everything submitted, um, we need to have, um, someone named from township to be certifying, certifying the data, platform port, and the federal audit clearinghouse. And, um, and other, any other individuals that might be accessing this data going forward. Uh, they do know that Lauren is on her way out and that there is some new treasurer on this way in. So, I, um, John, I did ask him, uh, if there is anyone in particular that needed to be in that number three position. Number three thing that they need.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he said it should be the treasurer being, but it, it should be Lauren because she was the treasurer when this was completed and the information was received. Um, but to put, um, he suggests to put myself and, um, Mason on it as well.
Okay.
Get everything.
And am I mistaken that I thought that they were submitting? Are they submitting?
That's the way I read it too, it doesn't look like if we have to go in and populate the information into the DCD report. And normally the auditors would do that format, just go in. So I'm kind of with the way it looks.
That's what it looks like to me too, so I want to make sure that that's clear so that we're not
thinking they're doing.
And then they go, and then we don't do what we were supposed to do. So I would just make sure that when you respond with that information, you're clear on that.
For then.
Does anyone else have a question about that? I would say that we should make a motion to approve the audit submission with those three people listed for number three.
I'll make that one.
I'll sign it.
Being we do, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next, we have a website launch slash slash maintenance plan.
No.
This is not that.
Um, actually, you can, I guess you can come up, there's, it is ready to launch. There are a couple of report issues that need to be resolved, but other than that, you can launch it without those three parts.
Okay.
Um, the only question we did have was, there is a maintenance plan for ten dollars a month that covers the licenses needed and pull back up every month. Updates are all covered.
Okay.
For the ten per month. Otherwise, if there's an issue, it would be an extra charge for it to be resolved.
Okay.
It's mentioned that it's an option, but it, that exact, the maintenance is not included. It does say that there's an additional maintenance, it's called, uh, plus, the plus program.
Did you want to know that?
He just needs, he just needs to go ahead to.
Um, so the only thing that would not be heard and correct would be the reports?
And that would be like the, the fire company report and the perks.
Monthly reports?
Yes.
And did he have a timeframe that he thought that would be able to be fixed or not really?
He had a question as to how it was going to be laid out, and that was the only layout issue, the question that he had. And he said that's pretty, that's pretty quick to, once he has the information. Because he doesn't have all the reports for, like, if he wanted, like, just to do, like, month, like, month to month, like, the most recent posted, or if it was going to be, like, going back, yeah. So that's, but he, and he would need all those reports to get it to him, because he did not have those. That was the only thing that wasn't. And Cindy's been uploading things as we've been doing.
What do you guys think? Should it be a, a system where every month, it's just like these minutes here, where we, every month, we post
the reports?
The reports?
I wouldn't.
Because it, yeah, we do review it at the, at every meeting, board meeting at the end of the month, so yes.
And then, like, more, did you want, like, more of, like, the archive? How this is, like, the running?
I think that would be good.
Okay.
Because then any, anyone could go back and look at those reports and be able to see what.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's keeping in the, what we've got for the minutes anyway, so it worked.
They were, yeah.
Definitely be a direction.
The, the ten dollars a month, we haven't done anything on that one yet.
That would need to be, um, he would need to know whether that was going to be a yes or were going to weigh that option to launch it.
What does that maintenance give us a month? It's a loan, it's ten dollars a month, what is it like here?
What is that monthly?
Yeah, I have the, I have contract, and it, 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 I'm going to show the contract, it's like the plus program, it's optional, but I can, I can go back and check it. But he did say it was, yeah, just a basic.
We can do it next week.
Okay, we need to do it next week if you want to, if you want it next week.
Make sure you get a line in. Okay. Yeah, so I would say, um, if, when you call, or when you talk to him, just let him know that that's what we would like for the monthly report and that you're ready to launch when he's ready. And then if we could somehow, i- i- is it the same web address?
Right now, it's not.
Right now, it's not.
Right now, it's just got an address, it's like it's, yeah.
Okay, so as long as it's the same web address that we've been using, I would also ask that we have Cindy post on the current website that we are, um, changing our website and updating our website and when we're going to make that switch so that residents know. And, and that way we can go live with it, and if there is a problem, we can immediately remedy it and nobody's, nobody's surprised. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Because someone who frequents the website, if they frequent it and they're there and they're like, wait, what the heck's going on? Why can't we get in? At least this way we can alert them ahead of time. We'll post on, you know, whatever social media, she can post on that too.
And she may be able to, you know, put, like, the construction or something, so people know it's.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure this isn't the lie, or, you know, yeah.
Right, right, okay, that's great. Okay. Um, next, bond cancellation request from Aqua.
Who opened that round, you know, from, what did it work for?
Says it's to take effect as of March fourth.
It was from, I guess, apparently it was done back in twenty twenty-one. It was issued, um, but they're saying now, they're, they're asking now if it could be canceled. I have no idea.
I would think that this would be a John question.
I did, I asked him, and he said he didn't have anything, and he didn't have anything on file knowing what this would be in regards to, like, a certain, like, project.
When, when did Pennsylvania ever get paid?
Probably twenty twenty-five.
It was.
More of that have something to do with that?
It was around, I wonder if it does.
I think we need to do a little bit, you need to, since the cancellation effect isn't until March twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, and actually, if you look at the last page of this bond, it says, uh, signed, sealed, and dated this twenty-first day of February two thousand and one.
Yeah, that's where I was confused, where they, she was saying it was from twenty twenty-one.
And this says, determine the bond shall leave from February twenty-one oh one to February twenty-one oh two.
Apparently it's still open.
So this twenty-year-old thing is still open and they're trying to cancel it currently.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be.
You can take some.
At first I had asked Eddie and he didn't know anything about what it was for.
I know, but the dates are.
Oh, until canceled.
They're conflicting.
So which one was in effect? What's the back then? This doesn't even look like it's through off.
This is a short one, huh? Here's the one, and the other side is still open.
Yeah.
And that's the one I think we have with it.
So it's twenty years old and they want us to cancel it?
Yeah, because they're saying it's in twenty-one, they thought it could be sent to us.
I think we need to find more information on that before we can make the decision.
Who do I get information from? I've asked the applicant person, yes, that was fair, because I just said, like, I really don't know what this could be for, so if you need more information.
And they couldn't tell you?
That's what, they said, attached is the cancellation notice.
Can you read, can you?
Copies of the bond, and they thought it could be canceled, but after reviewing, it was still required. But I don't know what would be required for.
Can you ask that, what's it required for? And ask that traveler's person, but also ask the.
Well.
I mean, I know it's a reopening, but I don't know.
It doesn't.
It doesn't list like a, is it like a blanket for the township?
John may know because it said.
He said he doesn't have anything because of the court. The original.
Yeah, that's true.
I thought he was hoping he would know.
He's been there in accordance with everything.
Thanks.
Do you have records, Steve?
Yeah, we have them.
I have them, yeah, I can load.
So I would ask Aqua, because it says here, Aqua's saying that it's still, the bond is, Aqua determined the bond is still required. So I would call Aqua and be like, hey, what's this bond for? Because we need clarification on that before we cancel it, because what if it's something that.
It's like planned for, but he's been.
Yeah. I would, let's, let's find out more about that. If zoning vehicle, oh, I have some.
Oh, you do?
I do, it was in your mailbox and I grabbed it because, um, I wanted to make sure that it was spread. We've all had something.
Okay.
He got, um, he pulled a couple numbers and options for.
Do we ever find out about that current, like, they finally come from there?
It won't be until, when did it say Jan, January, I usually take every other month.
Push it back again?
They pushed it back, yeah. It's basically if all twelve, whoever sits at the table are not in grace, they just cancel the meeting.
First, like, two months later. That's the government that was.
Ten, ten days later, and now it's a holiday. Wow.
Hey, you guys, let's, can we table this until next, next week?
All right, looks like we have four different codes here, so can we get it on one sheet?
I, I didn't have them until September, so, so.
Seven days.
That's all right.
So we have a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so put it on next week's meeting.
And these are all, just so you know, these are toast, our people.
Good.
Give that to you.
Thanks. All right, next, we have the, uh, set and advertised yearly meeting dates.
I had questions. First question, is it saying to two? Second question.
To two what?
Meetings.
Oh, okay.
Um, I tentatively marked out the light blue is the supervisor's meetings. Um, the ones that are the boxes are the first one of the month, the ones that are colored in are the second one of the month. May, I wasn't sure of if the week of holiday was okay. Last, this year we did, it was the same setup.
Yep.
And then, uh, November and December with the, um, Veterans Day in there, it kind of screws up the.
So we're saying one, one meeting in November.
On the eighteenth, on the eighteen.
There's going to be, I was thinking, because of the budget season anyway, there might, there's going to be workshops, so if needed, it could go to a special meeting somewhere in that realm of November, and then go back to the regular second and last for December. That way it covers whether we're running to the end of the year for.
Anything.
A budget approval, advertising and things.
Okay, so May is.
So May twenty, May would be the thirteenth and twenty-seventh. That's the only change on this calendar. Um, November would be the eighteenth only, due to holidays. And December would be the ninth and thirtieth.
That comes regular second. And parks, I did wait to do parks for December because they would be backing off of the last supervisor meeting.
Okay.
And what we need to do is document the meetings, the dates and time
Yep.
of each of the meetings for every month.
And for Ron, the, the December ninth is the anniversary of my uncoupling from my mother. Oh.
Be sure to bring a cake.
Just so you can grill it here.
Thanks.
I figured you'd like that.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve and advertise those dates for twenty twenty-six. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Do you need to say what these dates are to document those minutes? Do we need to say what these dates are to document those in the minutes? For each month, I think we need to do that.
Okay, so January, our meetings would be January fourteenth and twenty eighth. February would be February eleventh and twenty fifth. March would be Mar- uh, March eleventh and twenty fifth. April would be April eighth and twenty ninth. Uh, May would be April, I'm sorry, May thirteenth and twenty seventh. June would be tenth and twenty fourth. July would be eighth and twenty ninth. August would be twelfth and twenty sixth. Uh, September would be ninth and thirtieth. October would be fourteenth and twenty eighth. November would be eighteen. And December would be ninth and thirtieth.
And six P M.
Six P M.
Six P M.
I make the motion.
How's that?
All in favor? Right, any please?
Okay, make sure you get the plan all planned together.
I'm playing, I'm advertising all of them at once.
Okay.
Yep, one big old advertisement for planning, the workshops, zoning hearing board, authority, parks, auditors. Um, I have the auditor's tentative March meeting that goes along with the board supervisors and the, um, their board reorganization meeting.
What are you doing the authority?
It was something I was doing. It's always in one advertisement.
Okay.
Okay.
With our supervisor's reorganization meeting being January fifth.
Okay. Yep. So my motion, Bonnie's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, next, uh, appointment of taking the alimony to the descending hearing board.
Oh, we get what?
We can't get.
Oh.
Because it has to be in front of. I didn't know that. I didn't, I didn't realize that part of it until.
Okay, so then let's put that on the next Wednesday's meeting.
So she, she's aware that that'll be the next meeting.
And then.
John will be here and he already knows to bring this.
And have taken it on next meeting too.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Uh, next township treasure position and bond renewal.
Um. It says if we're making a change.
We do need to complete this, but we need to get Mason.
Yep.
So. Where's the change making portion say?
Oh, it's about.
I have it in application. And you would have to fill out. Well, this would have to go along with the application.
Okay. And you have that application?
Yes.
Okay, so I would say that's something that we need to have done. Soon, because this is January fifth.
Right.
That's our reorganization meeting.
Right. So I'd say you should, you should throw this out.
I wasn't sure if there's nothing else that needed to change.
I don't know.
No, I think it's just the name and.
Okay.
Um, we need to make the move for the pay that.
I haven't received the one that's for myself yet, so I figured if there was any changes, we could do that because I'm, I'm in the next, I'm, I'd love to get it to.
Okay. That's smart.
Did it say?
Because this was.
Doesn't go into effect until.
Right, so we're open because Mason is. All right, next, um. Revolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen. Update on the bank signatories. Um, it says be it hereby resolved that the Athens Township Supervisors have selected the following four people as authorized signatories for all citizens in Northern Dyke and first citizens community bank transactions requiring signatures. Um, currently Lauren, Megan, Ron and myself, is that correct? So I, I guess we would need to change that to Mason. Megan. Um, myself. And Ron. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next we have the township vacancies. Um, will you receive a letter? This is to the board of supervisors. Dear board of supervisors, I'm ready to submit my letter of interest to the two-year auditor position. I would be happy to discuss how my skills could support your upcoming projects. Feel free to contact me at, by number. Thank you for your sharing considerations. Thank you.
Hey, you like this whiteboard? I was like.
Hey.
Did she deserve it?
Oh, you, you.
I mean, we, we have. Two.
Right, I have two.
Okay, so. Well, I mean, what do you think here?
Do you feel?
That's.
I really.
I'm sorry, Robert, it's Petrouchek.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Oh, I've heard them.
Yeah.
So is that something that we need to, um, maybe have a conversation with them? And then, um, possibly move forward with at our next meeting?
I think.
How long have you just had two?
Yeah, it's a timeline.
Is this Mr. Petrouchak, on the up and up? Give us your thoughts. Yeah, but I'm just asking for thoughts, not a vote.
Um. Maybe. So Monday, Bonnie and I are going to be interviewing. Uh, police. So maybe, Ron, do you have a meeting Monday? I don't have a calendar in front of me. Do you have a meeting Monday?
Uh. Depending on which, I tell it to me at what time.
Well, we, if, if, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna be in interviews, four thirty-five and five thirty, at six o'clock. We could interview him. It's up to you.
No, I'm not.
That's fine. Mike or Matt, would you guys want to do that with me?
Monday.
Monday?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Yeah.
Great, so could we please let the super township know that Monday at six?
I will.
And Matt and I will be in for that. I kind of think you may be for that. Um, next personnel staff, we have nothing to talk about at that, at this point with that. Um, industrial appraisal, the work was completed on December first and second, so that's good news. Um, the P Sats boot camp training was, um, December ninth, started then February seventh and fourteenth again.
We were able to, um, get in and.
Oh, great.
So I think that needs to be ratified for. Attendance purposes.
So currently Megan. Tony. Did Tony go to that?
No.
No.
So it was Megan.
What's that?
Ron.
He does.
The four, the three of you went?
Yes.
And then we need Mason to be added, is that right?
But. Yeah, I, he can't. I'm gonna expect him now, just to pay the way.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for, um, the township to pay for Mason's attendance at boot camp on December ninth, February seventh and fourteenth.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for that, Mason. Uh, the P Sats Public Works Expo. Um.
Uh, Tony is available to go. So we've got everything transferred over for him to attend. I just need to get you a couple documents for. Um, to take with you.
Okay.
Okay.
Confirm the reservations and all the things.
And we already did that in a different.
Yep, that was already done. Uh, there is one other, we did, um, pre with the early bird registration to get the discount. We did have two spots. So I'm not sure, um, the supervisor that wanted to attend because none of the road crew are, are able to go. So I can either cancel that or if someone wanted to sub in, that's, I would just need to know.
Is it for Friday?
Oh, it's.
So.
All right, the earlier we can cancel it, it matters, but they said they, any, any changes would need to be done before Friday.
Okay, well, I cannot go, I can't take time to school. Any of you? All right, I would say let's cancel that. And then Tony, report back on what you found out.
All right, I'll do it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Bradford County Tax Collection Committee, another nineteenth, there was a meeting. Twenty twenty six adopted budget and the twenty twenty six meeting dates were posted. Um. This is the public works expo. I don't have those dates. Do you have any dates?
It's in a different. Under there. Tax collection committee, regular meeting, organization, regular meeting, March eighteenth. Regular meeting, September sixteenth. The budget committee meeting, September ninth, regular meeting, November eighteenth. And regular meetings who continue to be held at five P M at the Toronto Elementary School cafeteria in Vizum. Um, the delegates are. Selected. Or at the reward meeting, so I have that for me. But I didn't, there is, since there's no other meeting, I didn't feel it necessary to change from another one and do another.
That's smart. All right, the annual grant workshop on February twentieth, do we have someone attending or?
It's, there's no charge to attend it. It's just you have to register, so if there's somebody that wanted to attend, I would just need to know. It's in, it's at the Keystone Cated.
Okay, so is that something?
I was there one, yeah, I went.
Would you want to go back or not?
I, I could absolutely go back.
Would you, Mason? Is that something, the grant workshop that you and Megan can attend together? I mean, that would be good for both of them. Tony, is that something that you would be interested to attend as well?
Yeah, I, I'll learn anything I can.
Okay. And then maybe, um, maybe talk to the police and, and fire.
I think when you get closer to it, they give you more of a, like, what, the certain, what grants are gonna be.
Talked about?
So yeah, I'll get more information about.
So preliminary February twentieth.
Yep. I did also send it to, um. Mead.
Okay, good.
Because I know he did, um, and go final and he, because I think he was, um, gonna be. Be more involved with the grants than we was going to be going forward.
All right, Christmas luncheon for the township employees and volunteers.
You are confirmed for the nineteenth. I just was not sure if he was.
What time?
Noon.
How about this? I. We have a crazy schedule that day with it being the first, like, the last day before break. And I know that our schedule is a shortened day and from noon to three, we have, like, things planned. So I may be able to. At some point during that time, I may be able to ask if I can be here and just begin for, be here for, for whatever. But I can't, I, I mean, I can find out tomorrow and let you know.
Yeah, I need, I just need a life ride so I can, um. Get out. Yeah.
Anybody else know for sure you can or cannot on the head?
I can.
All right, there you go.
I know, yes.
Oh, good, okay, good.
Does anyone need, uh, for, for wards or like the service that they've met?
Police, we really like the service.
Yes, I have two, I just wasn't sure what. Yep, two, gonna be a twenty five, that I wasn't sure what to do for. A recognition.
Um, okay, tell it our phone system update for tomorrow.
Tomorrow, everything should be good, done, and we are going to be shown how they work, what to do, what, all of that.
All the extension.
My, it actually rang, my, my new phone rang today and no other phone rang and I was scared. I. I was like, oh yeah, that's my phone. I'm like, hello? Yeah.
And did it work?
Yeah. Yeah, it's like, fancy.
All right, um, next the information from text, my go.
Um, this gentleman had called a few times and asked if this was something of potential interest. I said I would get it on the agenda. I, I apologized to him because I forgot the last round, the last agenda, I, I did forget and I apologized to him and told him I would put on the agenda to be reviewed. And if there is any interest, I would, or not, either way, I would call him tomorrow.
What is it?
It is a, a program designed to help townships improve communication through simple text messaging.
So it's, um, like it ends up being a legit on your, uh, your website page and then. People can text in if there's a problem or if you or this needs to be taken care of, they can text and it comes into the system as an email. Um, the same thing, okay, if you need to shut down a road, you need to do something, you can, is this people about, you know, sign up for the service, then you can send text messages.
Again, yeah, I know.
Like the, like, I guess, like the county where they call that the code, right? It's kind of that, I think, so.
And do we know the cost associated with this?
Um, he wanted to go through a little demo and stuff with me and I told him that I would love to if that, if there is an interest in getting more information. They, he couldn't just give me a price.
I think it was doing it on your population.
What did he broke?
I don't know, we had it, but. I don't think it was a terrible expense, like, it was pretty small, but it is based on your population, it's how they come up with the price.
Price.
And then it's how many messages you receive or.
Can?
Yeah. You get a certain amount for the year and then.
I mean, maybe you should at least hear about it.
Yeah.
It sounds, it sounds like a great system. I mean, people are used to that. Okay, um, at this point, uh, six fifty-two, we'll adjourn to executive session for, um, contract and township personnel.